Good evening. Happy Mardi Gras to all of you. I now call the Tuesday, February 21st Manhattan City Commission Meeting to order. We'll begin with the roll call.
Mayor Hassel?
Here.
Commissioner Reddy?
Present.
Commissioner Butler?
Here.
Commissioner Mata?
Here.
Commissioner Morris?
Present.
Mayor, we have five Commissioners present. The quorum of three has been met.
All right. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll begin with Commissioner comments. Sorry, Commissioner Morris, do you have anything?
Um, no, thanks.
All right. And we got the basketball game coming. Okay, very good. All right. Commissioner comments. We'll move to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are those of a routine or housekeeping nature, or items that have been previously considered by the City Commission and may be approved in one motion. A Commissioner may request an item be removed for separate discussion and considered immediately following the consent agenda. Comment from the public will be available here in a few minutes. Commissioners, do you have any questions about any items on the consent agenda?
Yes, just on H2. I just saw there that it's talked about alcohol sales and that they could, the vendor could get sponsors and everything else. Is, I assume the idea there is there's ways for them to make more money than just what we're paying them as part of this, and that's part of their whole deal to get this done.
Yeah, that's correct, Commissioner. They would have, we have told them that that's for approval tonight. They would have to come back and see additional approval for, to be able to offer that service and what the parameters of that would be.
Right, but that's part of the whole deal and why they'd want to do it, which I think makes sense. Okay, thanks.
And we talked one time earlier on that deal was if they sold a lot of sponsorships, was the city supposed to get a bit of that back or anything, or is that all for them? Who knows?
I don't think so.
Okay, that's fine.
It would just likely be less that we would have to provide for some of the entertainment contracts.
Okay.
Mayor, question? I'm looking at the, let me find it again here. Okay, the, oh, the ADA Advisory Group, which is Item J, Consent Agenda. And I'd like to just clarify, it looks to me like the sole purpose of that group is to try to find ways to get more public input, but it's not to provide any input to the project or the...
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
If I may, yeah. No, that advisory group will not only assist us in providing public outreach outreach to the community so we can get feedback on ADA and accessibility, but they're also going to be providing input on the results that we have, any input and insight they have on accessibility throughout the community. So that group will be doing that as well.
Thank you. I was just, I'm just anxious for the entire community to be able to make contributions to that project because it's, we've kind of, it's been a while since we've addressed it, and I'm anxious to revisit it. And the other, let's see, I'm going to be voting no on Item F, which is the combining the Social Services Advisory Board with the Special Alcohol Board because the Special Alcohol Board has a direct funding in, quantified amount as revenue comes in. Social Services don't, and I believe that the Social Services Board will, amounts committed to them will suffer as a result of that. So I'm going to vote no, just on principle. And let's see if we have anything else. I think I've, I think that's all. Thank you.
All righty. Commissioner Reddy?
So about F, can we make amendments to that first reading for the ordinance? Or we can't make amendments to that right now. I would like to add, we know there was discussion about eight tenths of a mil and such as far as a certain amount for social services. And I think it should be clarified in the ordinance because we don't know what that revenue is going to look like, just like we don't know for special alcohol funds.
Oh, well, it's first reading, so we can make changes to the ordinance between first and second reading. But in terms of setting some kind of budget limit, that wouldn't be in the ordinance. That's not something that we would bind a future governing body by ordinance to do. There are some governing bodies that adopt budget policies that talk about certain goals that they have for the budget, like certain reserves or giving a certain amount to social services, but that would just be like a policy manual and would be a budget guiding document. So it would not be in, we would not put that in an ordinance. And then another note is, just as a reminder, this board is on a different schedule. So in the past, the boards, the SSAB and SA-FAC, they met and started reviewing recipients before the commission did its budget cycle and determined how much money would be available. Now, these boards, this board won't necessarily convene until after the commission has already determined the budget for their review. So some of that difficulty that's occurred in the past will be alleviated by simply meeting after the commission has already determined that each budget cycle.
So, but for any ordinance we make, even when we combine our Social Services Advisory Board and Special Alcohol Advisory Board, that ordinance can be repealed by the next incoming commission as well?
You can't mandate a certain budget, budgetary aspect by ordinance for a future budget.
Okay, like we can't, I mean, I'm not an amount.
Right, you can't mandate how the budget, not by ordinance, no.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll probably be voting no on that one as well then. The next one I wanted to talk about was G4, when we, the Aggieville parking garage fee. Since there's been a change because of this resolution, repealing a certain resolution, I just want clarification for the public to explain what that means. What did we change?
What we're changing is the overnight rate that was in the previous resolution. So as you all may recall, we adopted an ordinance regulating the Aggieville parking garage. Within that ordinance, it said the City Commission could pass a resolution to set forth the rates of that garage. The first resolution that we passed included a daily hourly rate up to a daily max, with that first two hours being free, and then it also included what we were calling an overnight rate. So if you got to the parking garage at 10:00 PM or later, you would be paying a flat rate to park there through the night. We've continued to have conversations with Aggieville business owners and visitors, and one thing that we realized was there was, you know, a demand and need of visitors to want to park in the Aggieville garage but only stay for a couple hours, whether they're going to a concert at one of those venues or they're just visiting. They didn't feel like they should have to pay the full $10 overnight max rate if they were just going to be there for a couple hours, whereas during the day you do pay that hourly rate. So the only change that's occurring in that resolution is we're eliminating the overnight rate. It's still first two hours free. It's still $2 an hour up to a 24-hour max, which is $10 Sunday through Wednesday, or $8, which was kind of that Safe Driver rate that we were talking about. That was Thursday through Saturday. So as an example, if I show up to the parking garage on a Thursday at 8:00 PM, I would be able to get my first two hours free, and then I would pay $2 an hour until that max, which is $8. And then after that, you have $8 gets you 24 hours in the garage. So that's kind of the change. We wanted to clear that up and after conversations with the district.
And I think that's a good change to make. Like we said, sometimes when we implement an ordinance, it's good to see the results that come from it and take that feedback into consideration as we make changes because this is something new that we're trying out and working with the organizations and with their clientele and everything else that goes down there. So I hope we keep track of how all of that goes. And we also don't want just people abandoning their vehicles for days on end either. So that's something, whether it's RCPD or Adrian, whoever's keeping track of that would be helpful as well. But I think that's a good, good resolution that we, making it more, much better for Aggieville. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, Commissioners? All right. If not, we will open public comment for items on the consent agenda. Anybody who would like to comment on consent agenda items may come forward, sign in on the sheet, and then tell the Commissioners your name and address, and if you represent an organization, also, you'll be limited to five minutes. Oh, sorry. Oh, oh, sorry. Dennis, cool your jets for a second. Somebody signed up. Laura, you get to go first because you signed up.
Cool my jets?
Cool your jets.
I have jets. Okay, Laura, go ahead.
Hi, yes. My name is Laura. I'm from Manhattan. I attended last, the earlier meeting this month about the Aggieville parking. I have a follow-up question if I may. I did read through the resolutions on the consent agenda tonight and then the resolution for the waiving of the overnight parking fee or the changes to that. And so in regards to that, I remember last time you had tentatively mentioned possibly putting the employee parking back on the agenda. I was wondering, I have a couple comments and then a question. So this waives overnight fees, not the parking fees for employees. Given the crucial role that employees pay, play in the viability and the vitality of Aggieville, and the fact that the goal 4.8 of the Manhattan Strategic Plan Implementation Factor as listed on the resolution for tonight was continuing to foster, continuing to foster the growth of Aggieville and downtown districts. I would like to make the case that giving parking fees for employees and business owners as well would contribute to this, and was wondering if and when the city plans to put this item on the agenda, and if so, when, if you knew.
We talked about that a little bit last week, and we're hoping to get a little bit more information since it's only six weeks into the, seven weeks or so into the year. We're hoping to get a couple months or so worth of data, and then we will be back either probably early April at the latest, hopefully a little bit before that if we can get some tangible data which we can think with to determine which way, it's a lose, lose deal. There's no good solution to it, so we're going to try to come up with, if we can come up with something that makes things better without making it worse somewhere else, that's going to be the plan. But we're going to try to get a little bit more information before we bring it back to us so, because there's nothing new right now. That's, sorry, that's all we know right now. Dennis, you're up.
Good evening. Dennis Cook with Aggieville Business Association, 1125 Laurel. First off, I just want to thank you for reconsidering and taking back off that Safe Driver Rate program that they had. And we're certainly not advocating, people not being safe drivers, but the idea was when we found out that that was more mandatory than an option, and we expressed that to you, I appreciate the fact that we got it back on the agenda and got that and assuming, I guess I'm assuming we're going to pass the consent agenda on that, so I do appreciate that. But just, you know, as an update, I know that I've talked with some of you individually, and, you know, we do have an Aggieville Board meeting this Thursday, so we will have an opportunity then to discuss, for the whole Board to discuss it, to come back with maybe some other, you know, some thoughts and ideas about some of the things we've talked about. But just as an overview, you know, just since, since the parking garage in January got started with their fee, you know, it was going active fee in January 17th, you know, right about that same time is when we lost really about 125 parking spaces again in Aggieville with the, with the public parking lot going down for construction for Midtown, parking on Laramie and half of 12th Street, you know, when that went down. And I was probably as curious as anybody would be as to how many of those people would just move into the garage. You know, that's where that would go. And only thing I can say at this point is, it appears people are really resisting the garage. We're seeing it all over. Matter of fact, we even had, had somebody today who develops websites for a living, came to see us to work on something, and when he got ready to leave my office, he wanted to know if he could go out the back way because that was going to be shorter for him. And I said, "Well, where'd you park?" And he goes, "I parked in the city park." I said, "You parked in the city park?" He goes, "Yeah, I don't understand the parking garage." And I said, "Okay, well..." You know, there just is confusion still. And, you know, and I think one of the things, maybe we need to go back and revisit, but we'll come back with something more formal, but something we maybe have to revisit is just a better explanation as people pull in because, you know, now that it had explained to me, I can, you know, I can do that. But there doesn't seem to be enough information, so maybe, we know we didn't do the Parking Ambassadors, but maybe there might be a stretch in there where we have to actually greet somebody as they pull into the parking garage and ask them if they have any concerns. Can we help them with, with either the use of the kiosk or the, or the app? But there's still, there seems to be a real pushback, and I hope for all concern that we get that figured out as quickly as possible. So, thank you for what you did tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dennis. Does anybody else care to comment on an item on the consent agenda?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Dean Punda from Meaning Productions. I currently reside in Salina, but I do a lot of work up here. I've filmed some of your City Trainings Day, Training Days and stuff. I've had the privilege of being in charge of the Summer Concert Series, sorry, the item would be H1, for the last three summers. Of course, 2020 was canceled due to COVID. But in 2020, I was approached, there was a posting, "You guys were bringing that position back in-house." The history of the program, as I understand, is they always used to go out to RFP for it, but due to citizen complaints, equipment issues, a lack of control, they brought that in-house. Prior to me, I believe it was two or three years that there had another individual hired who had been let go. I had taken the position 2020. Of course, we had no concerts, nothing happened. And then 2021, 2022, I was proud to run that program, and I think we did a pretty good job. My bid was not the cheapest, but I am, that is not why I'm here. I'm concerned about the fact that it's an automatic renewal with no sunset on extensions. I feel like knowing the past history and some of those conditions, and Parks and Rec staff might not even know some of that history because I don't know if you're aware, you've had some pretty considerable turnover in your staffing there. Even the short time I was there, I had some different bosses and different... But I would like to propose, or at least have it sunset in like a three to five-year minimum, or even maybe just require that it goes back out for bid next season. I will stand for any questions that you guys may have of me at this time. Because as it's written right now, there is no forced rebid in three years, five years. Most city commissions that I've dealt with have at least a three or five-year, it has to go out for bid every X number of years.
There, it's, while it's sort of considered to be automatic renewal, we can still cancel it with 30, 60, 90 days' notice or something. So we're, okay, we're not committing ourselves ad infinitum, as they say in Latin, but I think...
It's discouraging for new businesses when there's no way for them to even submit a bid for a process, and I think you discredit the potential for new businesses, new people to get into that or even be considered. And I don't think any, any service provider has a problem with the three-year rebid just as a part of a deal. I know the Smoky Hill River Fest is done that way. I know Parks and Rec services for some of the summer concerts in Salina are done that way. I think that's pretty consistent with a city of this size, and I think it's something you should, should look at considering.
All right.
I think it would be good to work in a process of evaluation and not just be automatic. But hopefully that's part of the process internal that we don't know about, so...
All right. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anybody else for any items on the consent agenda? All right, looks like that's it. I will close public comment. Commissioners, you want to make a motion? You want to talk about anything you've heard? Or we move forward?
I think we're ready to vote.
All right, make a motion, please.
But somebody else needs to make it because I'm going to vote no.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Mata, seconded by Commissioner Butler to approve the consent agenda. Please read the roll.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes, but no on F1.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes, but no on F1, which is the combining the Social Services Advisory Board and the Special Alcohol Board.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero with the exception of F1, which carries three to two.
All right. Very good. We will move on to the general agenda. And the first item there is to consider annexing the Landing Business Park. Stephanie, our Director of Community Development.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. Stephanie Peterson, Director of Community Development. We have before you this evening the first reading of an annexation ordinance for a tract of land that is currently being referred to as Landing Business Park. This 78-acre tract is located immediately west of the Manhattan Regional Airport. Brief background on kind of how we got here this evening. In November, MCM petitioned the city to annex its property, the subject tract here. In December, we brought before you a resolution of intent to annex, which you approved. That went on to the county, and at their January 19th meeting, the Board of County Commissioners for Riley County passed a resolution finding and determining that the annexation would not hinder or prevent the proper growth or development of this area or that of any other incorporated city within the county. This annexation has not gone to the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board as it is outside of their planning jurisdiction. As soon as it, or if it is annexed into the city, the planning board would then have jurisdiction to hear the rezoning of the property. There are three factors that are identified in the Manhattan Development Code to consider when annexing a property. The first of those is circulation and access. There are two possible access points off of this property. Currently, it receives access from Skyway Drive. During the plating process sometime in the future, those would be reevaluated to see which one is the safest and most viable option for access. There is no concerns from staff on the circulation, though, within the property itself. The second factor to consider is that it conforms with the policy directions provided in the growth vision of the Manhattan Urban Area Comprehensive Plan. That is a long statement, but a couple of the items that I wanted to note is that that statement identifies that we would like to provide attractive growth opportunities to local national companies, as well as provide a diverse employment opportunities in our community. We do believe that the annexation would provide both of those opportunities and meet that growth vision. And the last of those factors is that the property is located within the Manhattan Urban Service Area and can be served by city utilities. The urban service area boundary was adopted in 2015 as part of our comp plan. That boundary has not been revisited or relooked at since then. So it is, it does not accurately reflect our capacity to provide urban services to kind of the properties on the fringe of our community. MCM is not requesting that the city provide any sort of service, water or sewer, at this time. And during the plating process, we would look at the utilities and see what needs to happen in order to extend them. There are water and sewer services, though, within the vicinity of this tract. Just as a note, annexation and rezoning are two independent actions. We are not hearing rezoning this evening. However, I did want to note that at this time, what MCM has indicated to staff is that the subject tract right here, that they would be looking at a service commercial designation on the future land use map. Oh, and then the urban service area, the urban service area boundary is this purple line here. So the property is adjacent to it. It is just not inclusive of it right now. The second item, or the next item on your agenda, is about the annexation agreement. It is very much related to, back to this annexation. Mayor, Commissioners, if you find it okay, I can talk a little bit about that item as I think you may have some questions that might be answered by some of the material that's included in that annexation agreement.
I just wanted you to clarify the difference between the two. I understand, I mean, I've reviewed the materials, but they're, they're different. And so that's, I wanted you to describe the difference between the two.
The two, the ordinance and the annexation agreement?
Yep. The agenda items, yep.
So the annexation ordinance is the ordinance that you typically see in front of you anytime we're annexing a property. It just spells out what the meets and bounds are of that property and that we are bringing it into the city. The annexation ordinance, and this is where, yes, I thought this would come up, and I'm willing to go into that. The annexation agreement is a little bit unique. Typically, at the time that we are annexing a property, there's going to be plating immediately following. If that doesn't happen, we usually have a building permit, a development agreement, a benefit district, something that kind of outlines what that, what that development's going to entail, if they're going to be moving any sort of dirt, what our expectation is at the outcome of that process. That is not the case here. So that annexation agreement, it holds MCM to the site plan that you see before you. This was presented back in December with that intent to annex. The other aspect of it is the, anytime before soil disruption occurs, a developer has to go to the state and they have to get an NOI, a Notice of Intent, that they're going to do some sort of earthwork. That NOI requires the developer then to create a, to create and implement a stormwater runoff plan so that there isn't any sort of negative impact on, on any disruption to the earth and then the excess runoff from that. While the NOI is issued by the state, the city is actually the one that, that has to enforce that permit. In order, so we have enforcement rights, but there's no funding mechanism. Should the city have to go in and regrade the property or make some sort of change or improvement, we would be doing that at our own, on our own expense. The annexation agreement outlines actually a financial source that we could utilize if we had to go in there to, to make any improvements. So that's why we have that annexation agreement. The other thing I would point out is, MCM at their own request, this red band that you see, that is a 50-foot landscaped buffer yard. The Manhattan Development Code actually requires a 25-foot maximum buffer yard between two kind of, two different uses, so in this case residential versus commercial industrial. MCM said, "We'll make it 50 just to mitigate any potential issues." This area that's right here, that's a little bit darker red, that currently doesn't have any vegetation in it. MCM's willing to plant that 50-foot landscape buffer yard there.
What is the blue striped?
Yep.
You getting to that probably?
Yeah. Oh, no, that's a great question. I wasn't going to touch on it, but I can. Those are areas that have, the MCM indicated that they are likely not going to take too many trees out, not really do any grading on that area. They did note, though, on the site plan and I think in the annexation... site plan and I think in the annexation agreement, we noted, if there's a utility line that has to go through that area, they may have to kind of get in there to work it a little bit, but it's not going to be a mass grading like we have on other parts of the site. If you go out there today, you'll see that some of these sedimentation basins or detention ponds, they've already started to be constructed. That is part of that NOI permit through the state to capture any of that excess stormwater runoff. That can continue to happen. Right now, the city doesn't have jurisdiction. It would still be in the county because it hasn't been annexed. But if you did go out there, there has been some movement on that site and creating some of these retention basins. The other thing I wanted to note is typically on a plat, we would identify if there was any area that was going to be platted as no access. Since we don't have a plat right now, there's Oakleaf Drive, which is this stub road right here. It has been indicated that there will be no connection from Oakleaf into the site. That was at the request of the neighborhood and something that came out of the neighborhood meeting that MCM had had. I believe that was all that I had wanted to share, but I am happy to answer any questions. We do have other staff members here if there's a specific topic that's a little bit outside of my area of expertise.
Commissioners, what questions you have for Stephanie or staff?
Stephanie, I was curious how the elevation changes from this area that we're talking about a business park for and then up, is it thirty feet?
Thirty-five feet, I think.
Thirty-five?
Yep.
I just.
So this is the steepest area.
I couldn't quantify it very well. Okay. And I think your materials described the situation well. And so service commercial would allow what kinds of activities, what kind of businesses?
A service commercial is the land use designation.
And land use designation?
Yeah, the land use designation. And then from that land use designation, we would apply a zoning district.
Yeah.
The zoning district would, under that land use designation, would be industrial commercial services. That's the same zoning that we, that you had approved for Scorpion. So there's a long list of different uses that could go with that, but Scorpion has that same designation.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure that you mentioned what it could be, so I wanted to quantify it just a bit. I, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. We will open it up for public comment at this time. Same rules apply. Come up, sign in, state your name and your address, and you'll have up to five minutes if you'd like.
Drive, which is in the, the neighborhood depicted up there. I'm going to read kind of fast, so I apologize in advance. As I hope was clear at previous meetings that I've spoken at, because I've spoken at a few, I'm not here today to insist that this property should not be annexed or rezoned. I am here to insist that the city and county operate per statute KSA twelve dash seven four seven, the MUACP, including the Flume, Riley County Comprehensive Plan, and the Fort Riley Joint Land Use Study. As a property owner within a thousand feet of the property to be discussed, I made an investment based upon the city and county comprehensive plan, which clearly indicates this area would not be in line for development for another ten to fifteen years. With that said, I understand that public needs require a balance with my own personal interests, which is why I'm not unilaterally in opposition to annexation and rezoning. However, I do vehemently oppose this and future committees reaching decisions regarding development of this land that cannot be supported by substantial evidence and is otherwise arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable, referencing here KSA seven seven dash six two one C seven. The Riley County B O C C meeting preceding this is one such example, whereby substantial evidence was not used to support their quasi judicial findings as required by Kansas statute. Now, according to the Kansas Supreme Court, substantial evidence to support a quasi judicial finding, e.g. the B O C C findings, is defined as evidence which possesses both relevance and substance and which furnishes a substantial basis of fact from which the issues can be reasonably, can reasonably be resolved. And per the B O C C meeting, Holman stated, quote, "The board needs to determine if anything they have been presented or heard today would hinder or prevent the proper growth and development of the area," end quote. McKinley said, quote, "He does not, due to the requirements of the development, to include a buffer," end quote. Ford said, quote, "He does not see where it has anything other than positive impact to the area." And he likes the fact that we are putting in large tracts of land, and it benefits include property sales, tech, jobs, and opportunities," end quote. Clearly, these findings are not substantive evidence that support their decision, nor do they address deleterious considerations, the importance of which I'll be covering next. More importantly, precedent has already been established in a nearly identical case by the Kansas Supreme Court in their two thousand and eleven decision of Baggett versus B O C C Douglas County, and it expounds upon one element in particular that has been ambiguous from the start, and that is the intended use of the property. Olson stated, quote, "No current plans have been developed for the site. This property will take years to develop into development. No concrete plant will be constructed on the site," end quote. While MCM has indicated on their application, quote, "That the future intended use of the property is a business park. The specific businesses located in the park will be restricted to those uses permitted within the ICS district, which we just mentioned, as outlined in the Manhattan Development Code," end quote. For reference, in the Baggett case, it was stated that, quote, "The developer was unable to be specific as to the intended use of the property, only that it will be within the permissible uses under the industrial zoning classifications." This exact ambiguity is addressed and expounded upon in the aforementioned Supreme Court decision, and that reads, "We find no evidence to support a finding that any use that might be permitted by the various industrial zoning classifications would not hinder or prevent proper growth and development of this agricultural residential area. None." In other words, for the board to approve the annexation by a mere conclusory finding without a more careful and deliberative consideration of the extent that any of the proposed uses might hinder proper development of the area, under consideration as both unsupported by this record and inherently arbitrary and capricious. We do not substitute our judgment for the board, but rather conclude that, with all due respect, the board failed to perform its function under law. Where the developer of the land in an island annexation cannot specify the intended uses of the land but provides only a category of potential uses, the board must examine those potential uses, or at least the most potentially deleterious uses, and determine whether those potentially deleterious uses would hinder or prevent proper growth and development of the area. Failing in that examination, the annexation cannot survive judicial scrutiny under KSA twelve dash five twenty C. Running out of time. I did want to mention the concerns for noise mitigation. We're exposed to Fort Riley and the airport. We're looking at ninety-plus decibels of construction for four to five years. In summary, I'm not advocating against annexation. Rather, I'm insisting that this committee carefully consider the ramifications of the proposed use attached to this annexation proposal. In fact, all indications up to this point reinforce bringing the property into the purview of the city in order to facilitate more careful considerations with regards to conformance with the goals, objectives, policies, and community impact.
Very good.
Ending your questions.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else care to comment on possible annexation and agreement?
Ed Huddleston, twenty-four thirty-eight Brookfield Drive. The only thing I would like to make a comment on was earlier it was stated that some earthwork was done here and here and here. Clarification of some is kind of light because they've already dug thirty feet ditches. They've already put concrete in for the sediment basis. I got it. They're constructing the sediment basis, so there's not a runoff, which our neighborhood sometimes does flood, and you will get waterways by my house, which goes in between these two houses to the point I've never built, because this ditch right here floods into mine, which is going down over this hill. And we hope that that one sediment can, can control that water that's going down in there. So the NOI, we've never seen it. We've never heard it. They conducted a business meeting with the neighborhood, but their quote-unquote words was, there's no official plan. But yet, they're already digging and they're not even zoned or annexed yet. It's still going before the boards, but yet they're already started their work. That's my only complaint.
Subject to your questions. All right.
David Beiford. And let's see. Make sure I know how to spell my name under this kind I just had a question. I, I wasn't able to come to the last meeting. Am I understanding this right? We don't even know what's going there?
Well, it's going to be a business park eventually.
I know. But what kind of business?
Nobody knows when they build a business park, what businesses might be interested in locating there until they're ready to locate.
It could be detrimental to the, the conditions of our neighborhood. I mean, or it could not be, or, I mean.
Yeah.
I would tend to look at the business park there. I mean, you call it a business park less the airport as it has developed, but service commercial has a list of possibilities. I think Stephanie's a professional and she can tell us what.
There's a process to develop land, and the first step is annexation.
Tell you what, once, once you keep talking and we'll see about annexation.
Well, that's all I wanted to know because I'm just trying to figure out, okay, am I, you know, by not saying anything, are we going to do something that's going to hinder the value of our properties or whatever it might be?
Once it gets, if it gets annexed into the city and then the planning board takes over, they're, they will have to approve whatever things they want to put out there. Zone, have to zone it. Stephanie, do you want to?
That's why, every property goes through certain stages.
I was actually going to say, I think that probably, yep, the Ikemans are here this evening. I think that they could probably speak to what their intended use would be. I, I was just pulling up some potential uses that could happen. It would be very consistent with some of the establishments already around the airport. You could have a general manufacturing or fabrication. You could have a lab like what Scorpion's going to do with the manufacturing there. There could be warehousing. There, I mean, there's a variety of different things. There's probably forty different permitted uses. I think that, again, I would put it back to the, the applicant. And then, Mayor, you brought up a good point, the rezoning, that would go to the planning board. There, we'll get into more of the actual use and in those conversations.
All right. Yeah, I know. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Anybody else want to comment?
And we understand that it's sometimes the fear of the unknown, but so, all of us.
Let's hear from the engineering people.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Mark Bashamp with Olson. And just want to reiterate a little more of what the intent is here. It's going to take three to five years to drop this about forty feet. And I think, Stephanie, you have maybe in your other presentation, the flight path, and it shows how much that has to be dropped. And, and so it really has to be, we have to get the, the area ready in order to be developed. We don't know what the size of the lots are. We don't know what we're going to be able to put in there until we get that, that soil dropped. And when you look at, in the future, when it's, you know, it goes to the rezoning, we're going to have to submit to you or to the planning board at Plenary Plat and go through all of that in order to develop anything else out here. We don't know where the roads are going to be, utilities and so forth. So we're wanting that service commercial district because it really, it fits out here. It fits good with the business park that's already out there, and it fits the needs for the community. What, the NOI is a, is a, is a notice of intent and also the stormwater plan out there. So those, these things here are, are sedimentation basins for the disturbance of the soil that is going to be taken out of there. It's not to hold back any of the soil that's eroding from other areas within the, this, one of the other citizens that talked about. It's not to hold back that, that sediment. It's to hold back sediment that is going to be handled during construction. So that way, it does not get in the channel and, and, and fill up the channel with sediment. It's, it'll, it'll hold up in there, and then it'll, it'll, it can be cleaned out when it does. It's same as what we have in front of Scorpion. There's the whole front line, the whole front area in front of Scorpion on twenty-four is, is a sedimentation basin, and it's the same way. Water comes in, it slows down, and there's baffles that come up and let the water slowly release and let this, and let the dirt settle out. So that's what these are for, and that's what's being prepared to start taking soil out here for the airport. And that will start next month. So I think Stephanie, Stephanie was exactly correct on the buffer and these areas over here with the trees. And, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to predict what's going to be the need and what, what people are going to be wanting to, to bring to the community as, as any other building, warehouse, manufacturing facility in three to five years. So it's, we, we, we don't want to set that, other than we want that area as a service commercial, and then it'll, it'll come down to the planning board for those decisions on each one anyway. So, any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Come on up, state your names, sign in.
I'm going to write it in first.
Okay.
My name is Yolande Adair, HOA, and my concern is, what impact would that have on our property values? Is it going to go up? Is it going to go down? Because right now, our properties keep going up and up and up, and we just don't see anything done for us. And it's a fifty feet. I would like for you to go take a look. It's fifty feet isn't much. And then to say, we are going to plant trees in a, in a five-gallon bucket, we all be dead before they are grown. So that's one of my concern, the property values. I've been there since nineteen eighty-eight, and I enjoyed the neighborhood. It's been quiet. Now we can hear the highway and we can hear the train, which we didn't hear before. And that's all I have to say. And I would like for you all to go out there and take a look. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, we'll close public comment on this. You'll have a chance to comment on the next item of the thing when it comes up here in a few minutes. Any other questions for Stephanie or anyone with the city about this? If not, I would accept a motion.
I'll make a motion up there. We approve first reading of an ordinance annexing an approximately seventy-eight point seven-three acre tract of land generally located at the northeast corner of Skyway Drive and West Sixty-Eighth Avenue, west of the Manhattan Regional Airport.
Your second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Butler, seconded by Commissioner Motta to approve the motion. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes. I would like to just explain that I, I, I think this is a natural extension. I have driven in Random Woods, and I've been driven up on the hill. And I think, I mean, I, I think there'll be minimal impact because of the sound, the difference, if that was what you were concerned about. But I think it's a logical extension to the airport and the, and the businesses that are out there already. But I think it's a logical extension to the airport and the businesses that are out there already. And I just would not expect a significant impact.
Mayor Hennissel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right, we will continue with the second part of that, more or less, the annexation agreement. Is there anything else you need to add for that?
Not unless you have additional questions on that document.
Okay.
We might be able to clarify, you know, the question was made about, they're going to put a little tiny trees out there that'll take a lifetime. Are they going to cover that so that it's something a little bit more reasonable than putting a little pin-sized tree out there?
Yes, so in item number two of the annexation agreement, about halfway down, it says that there's a minimum, yeah, minimum caliper as identified in a table in the MDC. So, for an overstory tree, the minimum caliper is 2.5 inches. We also, that would be when they were...
Not tall.
Not tall, the caliper, the, yes.
Diameter.
The trunk, yeah. So, that would really just depend on what the type of tree is that they would install. We also made sure that the mature height of those trees should not be over 50 feet so that we don't impact airport operations.
Yeah, because I took a hard look at that, because I've always been concerned about, you know, zoning and impact, you know, on the properties. Because there've been some changes around, you know, I bought my house in 88 Manhattan. There's been some changes around there, too. But generally, I think the agreements have worked out, and I particularly like the fact that, you know, it could have been 25 meters, we got 50. So, we've got a much larger buffer than is required. And I think the airport's going to constrain what kind of businesses go in there also, because it's at the end of the runway. So, I agree with Commissioner Morris that it should be minimal impact on Random Woods, and I've been up there.
Microphone, or talk louder.
I do have a question about maintenance of the 50 feet. Is it, so it's not just cedars? Or, and maybe cedars would prevent sound, but I worry about the, anyway, so tell me what the rules are.
The 50 feet that isn't that darker red, that's going to be just as is in its natural state as it is today. Their MCM's basically saying, we're not going to touch that. We're not going to remove those trees. They did agree to that darker red area where there aren't currently trees. They said, we'll go ahead and plant something there even though there's nothing there today. So, that's, and they are going to do the 50 feet. The MDC would require the 25. We do have a list of approved trees, so that there is not something that's invasive, an invasive species. They would really get to just pick from that list that's identified in the MDC.
Nobody plants cedars, though.
Not on purpose.
Just saying.
So, if we are, if we're going to be annexing this area, the individuals that spoke, are they also part of that annexation? Or just that land?
No.
Just that land, so they're not, because I was thinking, when we, you know, we mentioned a lot about the planning board, it would be good to have an individual on the planning board when we make some of these decisions, or have them be part of it. Because if we're looking at a long extended time, and they obviously have a major concern, and if they feel, or if they haven't received some of the communication, there's a variety of reasons why people may not receive communication, but it's better for them to be a part of the process. Or if they cannot be on the planning board, at least make sure that they are aware of the discussion coming up, either by regular mail or a phone call or something, so they can participate in this process. Because it is long-term. They're probably going to be staying there for many years. You know, you have now built homes, and they want to make sure, such as trees. We may not think about trees being big or small, but there's so many details that go into these things. It would be good to have them part of that conversation. So, that's something I would, I hope we look into further as we make more decisions about developing that area.
Stephanie, would you just review the process from this point on? Just the second reading, and then the zoning in, the zoning comes back to the commissions?
You'll have a chance in a sec. Continue to cool out.
Yes, so after this evening, if this item passes the annexation ordinance, the annexation agreement only takes one reading. It would go to second reading here in two weeks, and then the planning board would hear the rezoning. We do already have that rezoning application. And then after, it's going to be about three weeks after the planning board takes action on that, that rezoning would come back before the commission for action. The process will really just stop there until MCM is ready for the plating process, which I believe Mark Bashamp said was about three to five years of site prep that needed to occur before they were ready for the plating process.
And whenever that happens, will there be a new notification? Or what, at what point, is there another chance, or would that not be?
And that's what I was trying to look at real quick. I don't believe that we provide public notice for the plating process. It's typically just annexation and rezoning. I will verify that after I stop talking. But, so there wouldn't be another public notice that goes out. I would also say that this area, the Random Woods area, is outside of Manhattan urban area planning boundary. So, there wouldn't be opportunity for a representative from that area to sit on the planning board because you actually have to live within that area. So, no.
They will get a notice for the rezoning, though.
For the rezoning, correct. Yep, they will.
Is there any further action at the county level at all? I don't think so.
No, if the annexation goes through, then it is under the jurisdiction of the city.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
All right, we'll open up this agenda item for public comment now. And I forgot the, one of the more important lines from the thing, it's, each speaker may have up to five minutes. Can speak once on this subject. Neither the commissioners nor our policy is, the commission or the staff will answer questions or get into a debate about an issue. We'll take your comments under consideration. So, go ahead and come on up.
I get another five minutes?
If you want.
No, I don't need another. I would just wonder, I'm new to this. So, when we're saying about annexing, is this annexing it into the city? Okay, so what about, what about between there and the city limits?
It's considered an island annexation, or they jump over unannexed land to the annex.
And the reason I ask, I'm a pastor of Faith Baptist on Scenic Drive, and I just was wondering about that. And the only other comment I have was, I noticed that the other business park, not all of those buildings are being used. And again, I suppose that has nothing to do with what this business is wanting to accomplish. But I'm wondering, are we going to end up having a bunch of empty buildings over there?
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I have a, I have a point of clarification. So, I was incorrect. When the preliminary plat comes before the planning board, there is going to be notice to the neighbors. If it's in the county, it's a thousand-foot radius. If it's in the city, it's a 200-foot. There's also a neighborhood meeting that would be required as part of that process. So, there will be another opportunity for folks to weigh in when that preliminary plat comes.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else? Come on back up. And we may not be able to answer it, but go ahead.
I am just looking at, over the years that I lived there, and a lot of our people here went out with lawnmowers and kept up the properties for years and years and years. Isn't there some kind of a statute that they have the right to some of that land after they maintained it for years? You may know that.
I doubt it. Legally, no, you can, no, I don't know. That's a question for your attorney to answer.
Yeah, okay, well, I'm just wondering, because there's a question, a statute with a state about that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Just try and cover the part I didn't get to, but I did want to start off with saying...
State your name again. I forget.
Stafford Gossar, 2455 Brookfield Drive. I did want to state again with emphasis, though, I don't know if I come across as impartial. I try to be forthcoming in how I'm going about describing some of the things, but trying to make a statement so that the message is heard. But I do, you know, think MCM has been pretty reasonable through most of this. So, again, it's not me trying to attack anything in particular, just trying to make sure that all the considerations are put before you all who have to make the decision. So, with that said, one of the other concerns with the noise, just to expound upon that a little bit more, was within that Supreme Court decision in the Baguette versus Douglas County Board of Commissioners, it included a statement that said, "If the proposed uses include uses that would create commonly recognized nuisance conditions, would not the annexation acreage be precluded from proper development?" And noise pollution would be my primary concern as an affected homeowner. And in that regard, it's important to note that the Manhattan Noise Ordinance states, "The purpose of the noise ordinance includes protecting the public from excessive and unreasonably loud noises that may be detrimental to public health, the community's quality of life, or the value of the property." And what you may or may not understand, because I had to glaze over it quickly last time I was up here speaking, so we fall within the Fort Riley LUPZ. So, we're exposed to a threshold of 57 decibels is what the weighted average is. And we're on the border for, I think it's 60, for the airport. But what those fail to take into account, because they are C-weighted averages, is noise propagation from more than one source, meaning Fort Riley in addition to the airport. Not to mention the amplification effect of cold weather and wind. It's Kansas, pretty cold and windy. So, definitely something to keep in mind, especially as we consider, you know, site development's going to take four to five years. Per one of the other meetings I spoke at, Manhattan Airport, as part of their environmental study, actually talked about the decibel readings from ground excavation equipment is regularly exceeds 90 decibels from 50 feet away. So, it's getting to be pretty noisy coming from all those three sources. And it's not just the site prep, it's, again, the predicted or anticipated use, whether that's going to significantly contribute to the noise propagation from both Fort Riley and the airport. So, I guess that was just the one thing I wanted to reiterate, you know, Manhattan Noise Ordinance, that's really what we're looking at there, is maintaining our quality of life and the value of the property. So, I just want to put that in front of you moving forward. And again, I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Carl Treese, and I'm precinct committeeman out at Ogden. And that goes clear up to the hill. And the airport, when you annexed it before, changed the direction of Wildcat Creek. And I have wondered right along why they changed Vinton School Road. That confused me whenever they were talking about resurfacing that portion that goes around the church out there. And it turns out that that Vinton School Road used to go right in back of Vinton, or Random Woods. And I think they changed that because of the runoff water. And I still think they should have kept that and fixed it so we could get out of Ran, Vinton. Anyway, get out of the subdivision. And as far as going, doing damage to your property value, I think having homeowners does that. It, I'm not in favor of just doing away totally with the homeowners association, but I think it should be run properly. And I was on the board for a while, and one of the fellows, I don't even know his name, said I let him build a storage shed over the septic leach field. And if I said anything I should have said, you should call nine, or, you know, 811 and have him mark that. I did that whenever we put the addition on our house. And I don't worry so much about the property values if the person keeps the property up properly. And that tends to do damage to all the neighbors. And so, I'm in favor of doing away with the way we're doing it now. And I'm sympathetic toward the noise subdivision, because that's going to make it so that there'd be more noise. But there won't be as much noise as there is now, because those big machineries are cutting trees and stripping things off of them. And I think in the long run, that Wildcat Creek Road will be moved up the hill. Because you can't do runway extension if it isn't. You'd be running right over Wildcat Creek Road, and that's not a good thing. So, I'm sympathetic with the homeowners. There's some of my friends, one of just died, lives close by. And there's a big ravine right in back of his house for runoff water, and then a big sewage pipe going under the road. And that was all done some time ago. I've been here now going on 12 years, and I like the area. I enjoy that. But I sat out on the porch a lot and watched the world go by. That's what retirement does to you. And I, I'm in favor of redoing the way it's being run, though. And I don't think that I would have bought that place if I had known there was a homeowners. The realtor should say that it's got a homeowners if they do that, and I'd have bought someplace else. And I'm sympathetic with anybody who is worried about their property value, because I think that's their business. If they keep the track of that and make it look nice, they'll get their money out of it. By the way, I'm Carl Treese, and I'm the precinct committeeman out there in Ogden. And I like Ogden. I would have bought a house in Ogden if I could have found one that was suitable for us. And we built on to the house and put a storm shelter in there. Actually, the whole addition is storm-proof. It might blow the roof off, but it's, those blocks have six inches of concrete with rebar together. And I'm not worried about my value.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Like I see here that...
State your name and address.
There's going to be more discussion.
Ma'am, please state your name for it.
Oh, Melissa Huddleston. I live at 2438 Brookfield Drive in the neighborhood there, sorry.
Let's head, okay.
But I guess the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board is going to have a meeting like March 9th. And then there's also going to be another meeting like the March 21st. I don't know if we can get mailed out to our neighborhood some of these meetings so that more of us kind of know what's involved. And that way, we can get more input. And then, I guess the other thing, on that map in the blue, it's been a while since I've looked at it, but the blue areas, I thought stated that that was tree removal areas. So, I haven't looked at the legend lately, but that was one of my other questions. But that's, that's it. Just maybe get mailed out some more notifications then.
All right.
You want to give us an official interpretation of the blue area?
Sure, I can address both of them. First, with the rezoning, before it goes to planning board, there will be a mailed notice for anybody within 1,000 feet of the county, 200 feet if it's within the city. And then the blue area, that is an area that they've identified is likely not to have any trees removed or any earthwork done to it unless there is a utility that needs to be located through that area, or there's something else during the plating phase that they find that they need to work inside those designated areas.
So, Stephanie, we're not done with the public.
Now, is there anybody else want to weigh in, public comment-wise? Okay, if not, I'll close public comment on this second item. Go ahead. Go ahead.
So, Stephanie, how many days do they get ahead of an actual meeting for a public notice? Is it 10?
That's 20 days, no fewer than 20 days before the notice. So, if it was, that already should have been sent out.
Okay, for the ninth meeting, it should have already been sent out?
Correct.
Okay, and that's by regular mail?
Correct.
Okay, and I don't know the regularity of mail that you receive in Ogden. You know, postal service is very different, neighborhood to neighborhood, town to town, not town to town.
Evening.
Evening. Does it take several days? I shouldn't be having this dialogue with all of you right now. But if you don't receive it, she said it was already mailed out. Today is February 21st. So, if you don't receive it in the next few days, this is a Tuesday, if you don't receive it by Friday, I highly suggest you all call the city office, just so they know that it's taking longer to get there. Because if there's future notices that we send out and you receive it after the meeting, there's no point. And that happens in a few areas. So, just to give us a heads up, that way, I think we should make note of, if, if we recognize that the mail service or the mailing is not working, we should look at either emails and also phone calls, especially if it impacts that community. Whenever, when community members take time out of their life to make it to our meeting because they have a concern that's impacting their lives, I think we should make a few attempts, because these are permanent changes that are going to be happening. So, I just want us to keep track of how long it's taking for them to get the mail and if they were able to make it. And just keep us informed if you're not getting the mail now that you know that it's been already sent out. Thank you for all being here also.
So, so Stephanie, there, the meetings that they're going to have in March, there's probably not going to be much new information between now and then, really. They're not, you guys aren't going to have new and exciting plans and lines and roads and, so it's going to be the same stuff, just the next step of, of the planning board, now that they have jurisdiction of it? Approving the same thing we approved tonight? No?
No, they'll just approve the rezoning. So, the site, the, the site plan that you see before you won't be part of that discussion, likely, because you've already, should it move forward, you've already approved that agreement and that site plan. That was really for the annexation. There won't be any, there won't be any site plan that accompanies that. It'll just be identifying what the rezoning is, which we've already kind of indicated is the industrial commercial services.
So, from ag to industrial commercial service?
Correct. I should note that there's already a piece of that corner that is a commercial district right now under the county. So, part of that, it's the kind of southeast corner is already a commercial zoning through the county.
Okay. All right, any other questions for staff commissioners? All right, if not, would someone like to make a motion?
I guess I'll do that, Mayor. To make a motion, we authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute an annexation agreement for an approximately 78.73 acre tract of land, generally located at the northeast corner of Skyway Drive and West 68th Avenue, west of the Manhattan Regional Airport.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Butler, second by Commissioner Motta to approve the motion. City clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right, good luck out there. Next item is to consider the purchase of land at 2711 Amherst Avenue for a training site next to the fire station number three there. Chief French, come on up. It's close, is it? 40 to 39. Second half.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Scott French, Manhattan Fire Chief. Tonight's item for consideration is the purchase of land at 2711 Amherst Avenue from the Living Word Church for a nine and a half acre tract of ground, as well as approve the resolution to provide bond authority. And then, I'd like to take a minute to provide an overview and discussion of the fire department concerning the ongoing negotiations at 2000 Dennison Avenue, as well as some future needs that we may have. So, with that, I would like to provide some background on why we are recommending the, the purchase of, of new land. This is our fire administration, our Fire One, Firehouse. It's at 2000 Dennison Avenue. It's roughly a six and a half acre parcel of ground. Two and a half acres of that is roughly our train, what we consider our training, training site. And this was constructed in 1984 through a, a land lease agreement between the city of Manhattan and Kent State University. We're currently sitting on year 39 of a 50-year lease, which is set to expire June 30th of 2034. And 2015, the city was approached by Riley County EMS for the possibility of relocating their actual administration onto our site here at 2000 Dennison. The city was in agreement at the time, but needed to engage with Kent State University as part of the 84 land lease agreement. Anytime we were to modify or change the building footprint, we had to engage with them to have that discussion. So, the city approached the university as required by the agreement, and the discussion was, was centered on both, the willingness to allow the expansion, expansion of our building footprint there, as well as whether or not they were willing to extend the, the lease terms that we had with them and, and go beyond the 2034 date. It was during these discussions with the university that staff was made aware that the university had reservations about renewing the, the lease as it is. And at a minimum, did not plan on renewing the training ground portion in a future lease. So, if you can see up there, the, the south portion of that is obviously our, is the main bulk of our building, which houses the three divisions. And then, everything to the north there is what we consider the training portion. Now, here's a better slide of that, I guess. So, with this, the conversations are currently still ongoing with the university, and we'll focus on that a little bit later in the presentation as we continue moving forward on the training portion. So, since the, the conversations started in 2015 with staff, we've been looking for alternative locations to house our training site. And factors that we've been used to, have been used to locate were been centered around the idea of, one, we need to find a new location that has good accessibility and, and location within the city limits, such as, you know, the travel distance of where to get to other parts of the community, as well as having good routes and roads to get to arterials to be able to, to get out throughout the rest of the city. The second thing we were looking at was size, needing to be larger than, than our current site of obviously two and a half acres. And originally, when we were looking for a new site, there was a possibility that we were going to have to move all of our, both our fire administration as well as our risk reduction division as well. That's, that's changed now, but that was one of the, the key factors that we're looking at. And then, obviously, price is always something that we need to be mindful of. The Amherst property, which is, you can see here, and that's the, the large, if you will, ground that doesn't have anything on it. There in between Redbud and Amherst is there to the north, north portion of that slide, or top portion of that slide. This was identified as the best option. And, and the main reason for that is that land connects with an existing fire station. So, Firehouse Three is there, if you, I don't know if it works here, yeah. So, here's our Firehouse Three, and this is the land that we're, we're, we're talking about tonight. It's easily accessible to Satchel, and there's actually two different ways if we had to, you could get to Satchel. It's an underutilized piece of ground. It's currently owned by a church, so there's not, the taxes aren't on it. It's currently a community commercial zoning. And to the north is an industrial, light industrial for the businesses. And then, Redbud area is what we, is considered residential medium density. It is a nine acre, nine plus acre parcel of ground. And it was part of the 2018, 2017 review by the public works when they were looking for a location for the joint maintenance facility. As you can see, this is where the blind area is, what we're talking about today. And then, this would be this, the Firehouse Three. So, February 15th, 2022, I'm sorry, 20th of 22, 2022, city staff went to meet with the city commission in an executive session to discuss the land acquisition at this Amherst location. And the commission at the time authorized staff to negotiate with Living Word Church on the real estate. City staff and Living Word Church have finalized those negotiations and agreed on a purchase price of $850,000 for this parcel, and I've included the land contract in your packet. So, is there any questions in particular to this training site before I move forward and talk about some more?
There's a little sliver there where the red hash marks, yeah. Is that so you can make a corner there for, for a fire truck?
Yeah, that's intended to, a future ability to possibly put a second area access. I'll show you here, future why that, why that's there.
It's, I just, it's curiosity, it's not, thanks.
Any other questions before I move on?
I do have a question about, this area has never flooded. Is that, would that be correct?
Well, I'm, I'm going to guess there has been water on that ground. How much, I can't tell you.
So, we would need to build it up, you think?
No. Well, we will have to look at water detention and, and those sort of things, absolutely.
You did, the, the fire state, Firehouse is, is okay.
Yes, no water in there.
It is, okay.
There is little, the, the fringe area on the, this area here, and I believe there's a spot that jets out right here, as well as in the future conditions, within that level. And there, I, I don't know if anybody remembers, I don't believe any of this area actually did receive water in the last couple.
Scott, Scott, when you finish, I can pull up the Riley County GIS and we can show you.
Any other thing?
Thanks, I just, those were the top questions for.
Yeah, absolutely, no problem. So, here's a, a concept of what we're thinking, if, if this were to be built out, this is something that it looked like. And I, I can't take any credit for this, I'm going to have to give Rob, the public works director, all the credit for this one. I think on one of his trips to Houston, this is one of the things he did for me, so, I don't know why, but I appreciate it.
He needed to keep busy.
As you can see, it's a little bit different than what we currently have. And, and some, this is that area that, that you were referring to where that, this would be a possibility future.
Intrude, okay.
Nothing necessary today. We just want to make sure we have the capabilities, if there's something in the future to happen, that we would have that. This is, would be part of the road that's currently, would be an extension of our current drive into Firehouse Three that would go into this area. And as you can see, obviously, there, we've got some ideas and thoughts on what it would look like, but, I mean, that's, that's really what it is, me and, and Rob sitting down and taking some time to, to put this together. So, here's a, the, the reality is, there, there's going to be additional costs when we talk about the training ground. And what are those anticipated costs associated with the training ground? Here's a basic, here again, this is my estimation. With the land acquisition of $850,000, that would be tonight's action. The next step would, need to be a master plan. That way, we can get a better estimate. These are my numbers, and they're really off-the-cuff numbers, but I don't think they're super unrealistic. But building out a master plan, getting an architect, getting the engineering firms that'll help us design out this is going to be important. It'll also allow us to phase this in, so we can match what, what we need to do on a year-by-year basis and make, make changes as we see. The site preparation utilities, obviously, that's your, there is no water lines in there currently, there's no, no roadways in there. And then, the other things, the burn building, it'd be a relocation. We're hoping that we can relocate our current burn building to this site. The tower trainer would be something new that we don't currently have. It would be a replacement of the current concrete tower that we have at Dennison, and this would be something that would be kind of in place of that, much smaller scale, possibly. There are many options, this is just one of them. But what we'd like to do is master plan it out. So, if this is approved tonight, the next step would be developing that so you can see more defined numbers and have realistic plan. Anybody have any questions with this?
Are, are you done?
You got more slides?
Well, I've got a couple more slides.
Okay, then not just on this, I have a different question as far.
Yeah, let's just wait, let's finish this up, because I got some too.
Okay. So, reverting back to the discussion, as I said before, we are still in the negotiations and discussions with the university on the 2000 Dennison lease agreement. We're hoping to be able to extend that lease for at least another 40 to 50 years. We know the university has a desire at some point for us to abandon our current training ground and looking at a three to five-year abandonment of what we currently have at Dennison. And then, we know that a building that's been there for 40 years, there's some exterior improvements, one of those that's, needs to happen sooner or later, is obviously the, we have some ADA issues at the front of the building that need to be addressed.
But they're not, there's no pressure to replace the fire station itself?
There is no.
It's just the training area to the north, right?
That's, that's, and the tentative agreement with the university today is yes. The only thing that they're wanting to be moved is our, our training ground, that roughly two and a half acres, it includes a storage building, the salt shed for public works, all that.
And you're building in a transition period to vacate the training area?
Right, right, that would be our goal. And there again, this building has been here for 40 years, so if we're going to renew it for another 40, there are CIP projects, so I just want to make sure everybody understands, as we go through this process, there's about three and a half million to $5 million worth of work that has to be done at headquarters at some point. Does it hap, need to happen tomorrow? No, but it's, it's in the near future. The roof needs replaced, there's multiple areas of concrete. We still have, in this building, it still has a gang shower, so everybody showers together. So, there are interior improvements, as well as flooring, has been there for, since it was built, the tile that's in it today is the tile that was put in there originally. So, there's just a lot of different things. And we've held off from doing our annual typical preventive maintenance since knowing that there was a possibility we wouldn't, we would no longer have this facility. But, so these, this is another area where, like I said, there's, there's, there's financial obligations in this building if we want to stay there another 40 to 50 years.
So, Mark, so what I'm, what you're saying is, the previous slide, which was for $5 million, was for the training one, the training building?
That's to bring our training ground up to what we have today and possibly a little bit more than what we have today.
With the land acquisition and all of that building?
Yep, everything.
And then, the one on Dennison is for the fire station?
This is.
That's, sorry, go ahead.
Yes, this is for the fire state, the Firehouse, Firehouse One, Fire Administration, Risk Reduction, that entire building. We have the, the large assembly hall in that one and the lecture hall that, the two big rooms as well. That, that's what this, this slide is representing is.
So, this would be an additional 3.5 to 5 million to the 5 million you, so total probably 10 million?
10 million is not an outrageous number, I don't believe. And the next, and I'm not saying though, in the next two, three years, but in the next five, seven years, I think that's a reasonable number. And I think it's important that you know about it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make, clarify that wasn't 3.5 and 5 million with that top one. And I know costs are going up, and I just wanted to get an idea of what we're looking at. Thank you.
Plus, plus the three to four million for whatever we need out east by Scorpion, Scorpios.
Yes, I did hear a name change. I don't know how many times you can change into that name, but.
Couple more, probably.
Yes.
All right, finish your next slide, please.
So, this is just some of the exterior improvements, and you can see some highlighted areas that we're talking about needing improvement here in the near future. And mainly, those are our, our big bay doors, the front apron, the front entrance into the building, getting it more ADA accessible. There's work going on with the Dennison project that we may be able to, to tie these together, especially some of this work that's going to involve some of the concrete in the, the front apron area. that's going to involve some of the concrete in the, the front apron area. As part of the, the, this is a little off-subject, but part of the north campus corridor, is that what it is now? We're going to lose access to part of our, our drive here, so actually, Public Works is going to be bringing and putting a road through here for us to exit out of here to be able to go to the south at some portion. So, there's an opportunity to take advantage of the work that's being done with that, that project and some of the work we need done at the front that we can maybe save some dollars there, so, that's one of the reasons I want to make sure you're aware of it. So, basically, that's what I have for you.
I think it's important to emphasize that, that this area needs a fire station, and so you're not, we, it's very important that we keep the fire station that we have there, and thus, the recommendation is that you're negotiating to continue with NBAF and Kansas State University's growth, it's essential, yeah.
I agree.
Was it the last slide where you're doing a facelift, so you're, fit in with the new district?
There's probably some, some of that involved. It's a forty-year-old building, you don't want to, with everything that's being developed out there, there is some of that that's moving it from nineteen eighty-five to twenty twenty-two, part of that, probably more than one, two, three that you see there. These doors are older, the paint's wearing, the, the siding that's there is pretty, it's just outdated. And there is a section right here, the old glass block, the idea is, is to put in full sheets of glass, be able to look into this fire station for that, to help with that whole look, yes.
So, other than Station Two next door, it's our oldest facility. We have done a little bit of work on Station Two over the years, where we've done some expansion and work in, with the City Hall facility, but, yeah, it's, time goes by pretty fast, and there hasn't been huge CIP projects done at that facility, primarily because of the fifty-year lease that didn't know whether to get renewed or not, so that was part of that big reasoning, but, thanks Scott.
I think it was magical when we first did the lease, and it was a shared and joint effort, but I think we're learning those aren't so beneficial over the long term. The other thing is, this, this fire station serves a huge geographic area, all of Northview, and then now this north campus corridor area too, so, it's growing.
Yes, it is.
It's a good location for risk reduction, for our building components, and, and the community uses it a lot. We've had to use it during several challenges that we've had from flooding and, and other emergent, standby emergency operations centers, active emergency operations centers, so, it's, it's come in extremely handy for the community, and so that's, it's an asset from, from that standpoint, and still running the student firefighter program that K-State students certainly benefit from, and we do too.
And I, I will point out, yes, there is ten million dollars' worth of projects that need to happen, and that's not including, that's, you know, there are grant opportunities, we will go out for, there'll be some opportunities, I, I believe, with some partnerships that we might be able to get with. If M A T C decides to go into the fire science program, that's one of the big things that they can help with, is, is buildings and stuff on the property, they just can't go buy property. So, that's been part of our working relationship with them, it's kind of been on the back burner here lately, but I know that when we reengage, that's, that is one of the things and opportunities we may have. I know Riley County Law Enforcement has, has continued to talk about training areas for some other things, that may be an area that we might be able to partner in too.
So, so tonight, we're doing the resolution for the eight hundred and fifty thousand with geo bonds, right?
I'll, how do you want to, it gives us the authority, do we have to spend the eight hundred and fifty thousand with this resolution using bonds? I don't believe that's correct. It just gives us the authority to give finance, more tools and ability to decide how they want to finance this purchase.
More than likely, we'll be amending it as we get more studies done, budgets developed, improvements identified. The lease is going to require us, within five years, to vacate that top half. So, we're going to need to be studying and realizing what it is that's taking place today at headquarters, will need to take place at Amherst. The bond resolution is going to give us the authority to temp note it, we could still pay cash in that three and a half, four-year period, or we could roll that debt out and debt service it over ten years. We have options, we'll continue to bring you those options, but we know more expenses are coming, so we'd like to talk about it comprehensively. Tonight gives us that authority, though, to go acquire that property and not cut into a cash balance. If we decide to cut into a cash balance for this, we can do that.
So, you know, there was talk about the ARPA funds, and I don't know, we have two fire stations, we're talking about this one here and the one by, you know, Scorpios and all of that. Another ten million is what I'm thinking there, right?
Oh, I hope not.
Okay.
That's going to be, that'd be a big station.
What would you project?
Thinking in the three, three billion dollar, I don't think is unreal, I think at one point, I talked about one and a half.
Plus fire trucks, or that includes fire trucks?
No, that would include a new fire truck as well, or we would need to add another fire truck to that.
So, the funds we have are just, you know, finite, as far as ARPA funds are concerned, so the, the rest of it, and so when you, the eight hundred and fifty thousand, let's say we bonded out, and then the, the other rest of the money we need to fix this training, training ground, we're thinking three to five years span, is that what you said?
I think so.
Okay, and we're looking at other, and then the other three point five to five million for the rest of Dennison. And you, you mentioned, because of Edge or because of the north campus corridor, we have to do this. So, I, I heard that, can we look at some kind of an agreement?
No, I wouldn't say that we have to do it because of the Edge, there are some things that I think we need to do in coordination with the Edge. With Public Works already doing some work right there, there's an opportunity, if we do them together, that's going to be beneficial. There may be some, some improvements that the, that just makes sense to do sooner than later.
Right, no, I agree with you.
It, it's a comprehensive approach, and that's why, internally, we talked about, let's mention the agreement, allowing us to extend through twenty seventy-five. It gives us a surety, we're going to be here for some, quite some time. Scott's highlighted, we have a number of CIP items in a forty-year-old building that we're going to need to make improvements on. Clearly, the university and the foundation have an interest in how this area looks, how it's developed, and, and we want to fit in. So, yes, they are coming, and we've hired BBN, they've looked at this, they've given us some options, that's the budget, those are the list of items you've seen tonight, but that agreement is still going back and forth, it's a consideration. You, the commission still has to agree to that, it's not a done deal.
What agreement are you talking about?
Agreement between the city and the university to occupy that land, which is owned by Kansas State, for us to stay there through twenty seventy-five.
Okay, so, my thinking is, because this fire station also needs to be there, and they're working on the agreement and working out terms, and one of the reasons we need to find a training place somewhere else, and NBAF being there, and thing, I think that relationship hinges on Kansas State University. So, when you look at grants and everything, we talked about M A T C, but we need to look at what we can get back from, from NBAF as well as the, the university, because as that area develops, it's putting more emphasis on the fire station. I mean, there's going to be more needs there, and, and it just makes it, it's in their best interest to have a, the best fire station they can have in that surrounding area.
And we've heard that over and over from the university, and it, it would be very detrimental if this station went away. You would, you would have to put another one very close by, so, they're very aware of that.
Yeah, we can, I hope we can le, because the agreement may or may not happen, I, I hope we can leverage some kind of a funding mechanism or some other way they can work with us on this type of partnership, if not the least, and some things. I think we need to get something tangible, because this would benefit both communities.
As Scott mentioned, grants, there's, you know, quite a few grant projects out there, and, and some that we may be successful, and in some, we might not, but, you know, you've all seen the master plan for the Edge District, so, if that happens for the items that are projected to go on the tax rolls, there'll be a nice increase in tax revenue coming from this district. So, if we target some of those future revenues for some of these future improvements over the next five to ten years, that can certainly help that, and that, and that's another reason to, to look at some of the bond resolutions for being able to do some of that.
I, I have a question about the Amherst property, just generally, and I'm sure there are good answers. I, there was reference to property taxes, because it's church-owned, there are no property taxes on it currently. When we buy it, we will pay property ta, no, we won't pay, I didn't think the city paid property taxes, okay. But we would pay them for the rest of the year, what was that part about?
It'll just be an analysis, since they don't pay. When you do a transaction like that, you have to account for basically the number of days into the year, but since they don't pay, we don't pay, it will just be simply a calculation.
Very good, and there's a reference in here to time is of the essence on this sale. What's, what's that about?
I think that's really referring to, we've been working on this for a year.
For a long time, okay.
And then they're ready to get rid of it, and we're ready to.
And I think, just to point out, prior to us approaching you about this opportunity, we had a, we, we worked with the church originally on the fire station, so back to Jerry Snyder, when he was our fire chief, and then we also had periods of time where we had first right of refusal. So, they've had offers for this land, and so, we're recognizing that, and so, at the same time, that fortunately, some of the uses that have been proposed didn't really fit, so, I think it's behoove us to lock that, lock that in, so we can get that site secured, knowing that we're going to need training space in the future, because we're losing the training space on the rent, at least we know.
Point of clarification for you, Commissioner Morse, when we buy property, we will more than likely have to go through the process to get it exempt.
Okay.
We may actually pay taxes, that we will go to BOTA, get it exempt, and receive those back. Just, it's a good point, because it's not exempt today, it's just an exempt user. The property is, is on the tax rolls, they just don't have to pay them, given their status.
There's a provision, provision in here that the city would pay the taxes for the rest of the year.
Correct.
So, that must be the timing you're talking about.
And then we'll go to BOTA, get it exempt, and we'll get those back.
Thank you, I appreciate knowing that.
Well, I, I know we need this land, but I'm getting nauseous thinking about the city paying eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for ten acres or less, and, and then the five million dollars on top of it, it's like, I realize it'd be nice to have nine or ten acres, but we've got two and a half now. How about we ask them, we buy half of it? And I, and this, I just don't, I can't believe that they wouldn't be thrilled with four hundred thousand dollars, based on the fact that there's no water, there's no electricity, there's nothing, and, and that increases the value of your land a lot if you've got water, sewer, because we're spending two million dollars to put water, sewer, stuff like that in, on top of the property, so, it's nice to have the best situation possible, but we're looking at, yeah, five, five, eight hundred and fifty thousand and another three million for the one out there, it's like, is there any way to save money? And can the city not use a straw man to buy land at a reasonable price, so the people don't know that the city's buying and will pay any price for it? That must be against the law or something, huh? Because, because if Walt Disney can buy half of Orlando before anybody knows it's him, how come we can't ever buy land without people knowing it's us, and then we end up paying two or three times what seems like a reasonable amount for it?
Sure.
Hundred thousand dollars an acre.
This, this property actually was under contract while we were in the middle of negotiations, and it was under contract for eight hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Who would pay that, what could you put there that's worth that?
Storage buildings were, are the commodity that was going to, to go there. They couldn't get an agreement.
Eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
No, it's right beside a huge mobile home court, those people don't have enough storage, so there is a market there.
I know, I know it's a high-dollar number, but I think eight hundred and fifty is, is, is not an unreasonable word that we got gigged some way with that price.
Wow, I, I need a Dr. Pepper, this is making my stomach hurt.
We need a discount.
We have, so, well, this, yeah, a little bit, so, the, I know that the, our, well, our church out there on west of Blueville, we've got twenty-seven acres, and eighteen or nineteen of it's still agriculture, and so we're paying property tax on the agricultural part. Are they not paying any sort of ag, land fee on that either, even though no one, somebody surely mows it or could bail it, I would think?
It does get bailed, I do know that, but I don't.
If it's generating revenue, they're paying taxes.
Thank you.
And it's not a church use, so they may be.
It's, it's, it's hundred and eighty-seven dollars, probably, yeah.
Minimal amount.
All right, well, is there any, uh, thank you, is there any other questions for Scott?
I have to tell you, when we started the, I don't know, five, seven years ago, I talked to Ron about this being a wonderful site for a tiny house village, because it was right next to the mobile home court, and that's how the city classifies it. And so, when he told me it was, they're planning it, I, there's, I can't find another site that'd work for tiny houses. But anyway, I'd just like to try and experiment, but this is a high, a, a, a high order, and something that has to be a priority.
Well, and that east acre?
Yeah.
It, with, for future use, or something, you could consider that still available, and on an acre, you could put fifteen, twenty tiny houses.
I think that ship has sailed.
So, okay, is there any public comment on this potential purchase of land for the fire station, training station? Come on up, state your name, you've got up to five minutes, don't expect us to answer any questions.
I probably won't take five minutes. I am Nicolette Unruh, and I am at seven two five zero Troy Road, and I plan to be at all of our city council meetings. I think, I really appreciate all of the commissioner's comments regarding this. Things that I am thinking is, as a taxpayer, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a purchase of land is pretty intense. I know what I purchased my home for with some land, and I think for nine acres, even in town, that does seem a little extreme. So, I appreciate, I appreciate your comment about that, Mayor Hatzell. I also would like to say, do we have to extend our lease for fifty years? Can we maybe try to talk to Kansas State University about changing that fifty-year lease extension? Because that seems like a comment for me, I'm just wondering, and I still knew to all of this, maybe we can or cannot.
When you say lease, Ron?
The, the lease extension of fifty years, that was brought up.
I don't think we pay any money, do we?
But it was just an agreement to do for fifty years, and you just agreed to have fifty years. And yes, you said you wouldn't tell me anything.
I wanted you to be sure and understand.
Interesting questions for me, or for anyone who's listening, maybe, I don't know. And does Kansas State University really want us out? Maybe, maybe not, so, just my comments and concerns, and I will write my name down, thank you.
Anybody else care to come on on this potential purchase?
I don't need to, just to let you know, K-State kind of wants that corner.
Yes.
And they would like us off the corner, but they would like us to be somewhere less on the corner, but that's what.
Well, and also, I, I appreciate that it's really important to have the fire station there, because we are serving a large portion of our community based on that, and I am part of that community, like, I am on that side of the city. So, I think having that fire station there is very important, it's important to me, I think it's important to a lot of people, so.
Okay.
I was just asking questions.
But I don't want to build another one, just because.
Right, no, it'd be a shame to have to build another one quarter mile up the road.
We're, we're having to move off.
And if we're talking about on Amherst Drive, we're building just a training station, and spending that amount of money, that's a lot of dollars, like, a lot of dollars. And I understand that everything is very different these days, but that's a huge number, personally.
All right, I started asking, is there anybody else want to come up and sign in and weigh in? Okay, I will close public comment, Ron, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
You, you said it for me, Mayor, relative to the circumstance we're in, I mean, we didn't have a, a, we think a fifty-year lease extension is I mean, we didn't have a, we think a 50-year lease extension is generous. And would we like to stay on the whole place? Yes, but we don't think it's based on their master plan. We think there's future buildings that will likely go in that area where the training space is, that will be a good return on investment for the city.
Maybe it'll generate $5 million, so we can pay for this training facility land. Okay, is there any other questions, or you want someone to make a motion?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, and I agree, $850,000 seems like a lot of money for that piece of land. But I guess it's marketplace-driven, because as Chief said, you know, somebody bid $875 on it. So we're getting it a little bit less, so there's not a whole lot you can do about that. And I know, two or three years ago, my concern was that K-State was going to force us out of that whole corner, and we were going to lose the fire station, and so I'm happy that, you know, we've reached sort of a compromise. We moved the training facility, but we keep the main station there, which I personally thought was essential, because, you know, MBAF's right there, and, you know, that edge district is going to expand. So I think we got the best we can get there. But also, you know, we're going from two acres to close to 10, you know, in training space. So that is probably also necessary long run, with the city expanding and a new fire station going there. And maybe we can partner with RCPD, you know, for some of that, and EMS and things like that, so there can be some intergovernmental benefits. And I hope we can get some grants, because, you know, it does look like about a $10 million outlay over the next five or six years. So that's going to be a bit of a struggle. But again, you know, I always talk priorities, and, you know, top of the list's got to be fire, you know, and police. And there's not much you can do about it. You've got to fund that, can't shortchange it. So I don't see any other option, and to go this way, and we can gradually work at it. It's not like we've got to spend the money tomorrow. We've got to secure the land, and then we can gradually, you know, make the transition. And it's nice that this land is next to the fire station, because it would be even worse if we bought nine acres, you know, someplace far away, and then, you know, the fire department's got to do a bunch of driving back and forth. So this is probably the best deal we're going to get.
Anybody else want to make a motion?
Make the motion. Make the motion, we approve a land purchase contract with Living World Church, authorizing city administration to finalize, and the mayor and city clerk to execute the contract and all necessary documents to purchase the nine-acre tract, and approve resolution number 022123-F, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds to purchase land and related improvements.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Butler, seconded by Commissioner Ready to approve the motion. City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Morse?
I'm going to vote yes, but I also want to explain that I, my purpose is to secure the land for the future, so that this would be like a build-out over, I don't know, eight, 10 years, before this complex is in place. But I think it's important that we respond and look to the future, because we see what's happening in Green Valley with Scorpion, we see what's happening all over this community. And there's growth ahead, and we're going to have to respond to it.
Is that a yes?
Yeah, I haven't said yes. No, I said yes first.
Mayor Hatzell?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Very good, thank you. Next item and last item, consider adopting a process to fill a city commission vacancy. Who's got that? Katie?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. First reading of an ordinance is on your agenda tonight to amend our existing city code section 2-16. In June of just 2022, last year, you adopted an ordinary ordinance to provide a process if there's a commissioner vacancy. And under the current ordinance, so not the new proposal, that would be made by appointment of the majority of the body, unless that particular position that becomes vacant is already up for election that year, and the filing deadline has passed. In that case, the appointment would only be made if it was necessary for a quorum. So that's what the ordinance says now. In the proposed ordinance before you tonight for discussion, is changing that section. It retains the part of the current ordinance that says, if the vacant spot is up for election, and it's after the filing deadline, that includes that spot, it would still be part of the upcoming election. At any other time, the commission would have an option. One option is to develop a selection process to appoint a replacement. The other option is to pass a resolution to call a special election to elect a replacement. So depending upon when this occurs, the special election, the ordinance says that if the special election is prior to the filing deadline in an odd year, that's when we make our elections, then we can actually change the question and add the position to the ballot that year. And I did confirm that, and the county clerk did respond and said that that would be acceptable. So, for example, this year, we would elect three spots, instead, the question would simply say, vote for four. That has to be done before the June 1 filing deadline, because that's when we have to submit any special question resolution to the county for it to be part of that election. In other times, you could hold a special election at any time, so that's the other option. So if, for example, there was a vacancy next February, next year's not an election year, you could say, well, we want to have a special election in April, and we can do that. The city will pay for that, and the county estimates special elections at the time, they're usually $30,000, $40,000, $50,000, depending. But essentially, this proposed ordinance is expanding the options that you have. And key, it's allowing a circumstance in which we can expand our general election question to include a vacant seat. So that's the proposal before you tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about it.
But the question, the commissioner can't say, I'm going to quit in six months. There has to be a vacancy by June 1, 4, whatever the filing deadline is, in order to put it on the ballot for the November.
Correct, Mayor, and actually, that's a good point. So we have to pass a resolution to call the question, so we'd actually have to do it in advance of, I mean, the June 1 deadline. And that vacancy would have to exist for us to call that question.
And if the vacancy doesn't exist till September 1?
Till the person resigns.
Yeah, and then what are our options at that point?
So if we're talking about this calendar year, since it's an election year, at September 1, if the vacancy arose then, you could still choose to appoint, and you can develop a process to do that, which means, like, you could decide if you're going to interview people or have people apply. You can decide how to appoint, or you can call a special election. But that special election can't be at the same time as your general election, because it's too late for that. So it would have to be at a whole separate date, paid for by the city.
Okay, and, okay, then the other part of that question was... Okay, I think that was, I'll think of it in a minute. Okay, any other questions for Katie right now?
Not necessarily a question, or maybe just make sure that I'm thinking about this correctly. Because I remember when we talked about how we were going to look at this, I said, well, I wanted the answer to the question, not necessarily an ordinance, but actually, I really like this ordinance, because it just lays out all the options. As we talked before about, any other commission could overturn whatever one does, but there's no reason to with this. It just gives the commission all of the options, whatever those circumstances may be on that point in time, for whatever that commission comes up against. It just says, we've laid it all out for you. You just pick the way that you want to do it. You don't have to worry about changing anything, doing anything. It's just all right there and built in. So, yeah, I like the way this is, because it just solves the question with it. You just make the decision.
Yeah, I thought the other half, so whether it's the general election this fall, or whether it's appointed by the commission, it'll be till the end of the unexpired term?
Correct, and just, and I appreciate that question. So sometimes that vacant spot might have a longer term than, you know, the third-place spot, which has a two-year term. But the way the ordinance is written now is, regardless of the length of time that's left, the fourth vote getter would get that spot. And it would only be for the unexpired term, and that's so that it returns to the cycle.
Yeah, keep the stagger of commissioners out of it. Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead, you should.
So if this passes tonight, what's the next step?
Well, if it's adopted after second reading, and so we have to have second reading, then it has to be published, so that the ordinance is effective. And then if a vacancy arises, then we would adopt a... The commission would give direction as to which of these options that they want to pursue for that vacancy. And if it is to have a special election, and it's before June 1, then they would have to pass a resolution to do that.
But you'd have to know by, like, May 1 or something, because to make the June 1 deadline with all these resolutions...
We wouldn't adopt the resolution until the vacancy is there.
Exists, right.
Yes.
The resolution's just one reading.
There's a reaction time that's necessary, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, if you just looked at our regular schedule, our second meeting in May would be that deadline to pass that resolution, unless you had a special meeting, because after you pass it, we just have to deliver it to the county clerk.
One of the things I have been disappointed in is that we're in the year 2024, and the commission really doesn't have a process to fill a vacancy. We don't say we're going to hold an application, take applications. We don't from the public, we don't give the public, and they're the voters. And so we stand for election among, before the voters, and so they have everything to say about why we're here. But in the case of a replacement, we don't, we're talking about one of these avenues being that the city commission can just pick someone off the street and not have public input at all. So I'm curious, Katie, if, do you have any way of knowing how other cities fill their vacancies? Have we covered that? I haven't heard that, I don't think.
Sure, when we adopted this back in June, we talked about that a little bit. So there's, I have two responses. One is if we hadn't adopted the ordinance that we have, which we chartered out of the state law. The state law itself says that the commission, or the governing body, appoints to fill a vacancy.
I know.
And that if it's not filled in 60 days, then they are required to hold a special election. So the default in Kansas is that that appointment is made by the government. No, the default is the appointment by the governing body. In the state law, the election only occurs if the governing body fails to act. That's most common across Kansas, that there's an appointment option. Now, other cities do have election options like ours as an option, so we're not unique in that. Overland Park has done it, Shawnee's done it, so a few others. But the default in Kansas would be for appointment by the majority.
Actually, I do have another question. I think I know the answer. Since this is really just one election for three, an additional special, if we add to it, it doesn't change any primary rules in the number of candidates or anything like that?
Yeah, so the primary is based upon the number of open positions, triple the number of open positions, so yes, it does.
So it does?
Yes.
Okay, so if we were to, that could, so we'd have an awful lot of people have to file before we called that.
If there's four open spots, there'd have to be 12, yeah.
12 people in there, yeah, okay.
So we couldn't separate this, if there was an election this November, to have a place where it says the fourth, where in parentheses it says, would fulfill a vacancy or anything? It wouldn't, there wouldn't be anything. I'm trying to think of, when you do the primary, how do you have it on the ballot? Would it, because typically, you do three positions. How would it be written up then? It would be three for this, and the fourth one for...
It'll just say, vote for four. There's, you know, for city, right now, the question says something to the effect of, vote, city commission candidates, vote for three? It's just going to say, vote up to four, that's it.
What I thought, too, is the person that comes in third, number of votes, gets the two-year term. And then the person that comes in fourth gets the unexpired three-year term. Is that correct?
It's still two years at that cost, wasn't it?
It would still be, it would be fulfilling the rest of my term.
Not till January.
They also can't be any more than two, right?
Not till January.
Well, no, 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 barring the special, if you do it in the sequence, it can't be more than two.
Correct.
But theoretically, the way this is written, though, I mean, this theory, say in the future, someone gets elected, and they get a four-year term, and then they decide to move out of the city. Then what would happen would be, the person that came in fourth would end up getting three years.
Well, no, you have to wait the next election cycle to do it on.
Because the next election cycle, as Commissioner Mott is saying, wouldn't be till the end of their second year. So without a special.
Yeah, and the special.
A special election, okay.
Correct, right.
A special election, okay, until the next election came along, or their term ran out. Okay, never mind, I'm going to stop talking. Go ahead. Cats win, 75 to 65.
Cats win, yeah.
There we go, okay. All right, what else we got here?
So I think I'm just trying to figure out my decision process. And so part two, number two, A, develop a selection process, so that's still an option. Pass a resolution for special election. The fourth-place winner will fill the unexpired term of the vacant position, regardless of how much time is left. So even if all of this goes through, the city commission, let's say, you know, resigned and left May 30, I don't know, that's still before the filing deadline, the commission still go with option one, and for whomever they want here, right?
There's an option to make an appointment. One thing to keep in mind about the ordinance, it does present options based upon the way we elect our positions, but I know it's, viewing it under current circumstances is how we're, how, you know, it'd be viewed. But bear in mind that there would be circumstances in which appointing someone in two weeks is in everyone's best interest. There will be circumstances in which asking for applicants and giving two months is in everyone's best interest. And so having the option is really essential, because of the different ways and times that a vacancy can occur. So I understand, like, viewing it under current circumstances, but there would be times when an appointment rapidly is really preferred for many reasons. So that's why that option is there, and it allows the governing body to make that call at the time.
You see, I agree, I mean, we could have a catastrophe, three of us could be on a plane flying to the AUSA meeting, and it could crash. I mean, in a case like that, you're going to have to appoint some people you wouldn't have for them.
No.
And you have to do it immediately, so that's got to stay in there for that reason.
No, I understand that, because it is current, and it does affect a decision-making at this time, so I'm viewing it from a personal decision that I have to make here in the next few weeks. So I understand the way it's written and why it's written the way it is, and I also understand why I'm still here, and I haven't resigned yet. So if I was to resign, there would at least have to be three votes for it to pick one of these. Though if I was to resign May something, there still needs to be a majority that goes with either option A or option B.
Yes.
And I guess you're looking for, you know, what's our opinions on that? I mean, I...
If you want to give me your opinion?
Well, I am, you know, because that's the elephant in the room, we may as well just, you know, lay it out there. Now, I, you know, I've been thinking about this, I like the options, I think I said on the radio this morning, this gives us, you know, four different ways to go, and it's got to be circumstantial. And with the election coming up in November, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I've got absolutely no problem with just leaving this, you resign, the state stays vacant, and four people run in November and have at it. And that's fine with me, I mean, I, because it's not going to change the outcome of any vote.
I know that.
I think you said that before.
Yeah, I know that.
So what happens is, you know, and I think your fear was that three of us would decide to put somebody in there for two years, and that would change the outcome of the vote. And I got several emails from people, a number of them not happy with the commission appointing, you know, replacements. And I think they make a pretty good case on that. I'm not sure I like, you know, the process that we used to replace, you know, Tom Ock, you know, myself. I think that's a little bit strange, too, but that's how it is, you know? We can't do that, and the state law allows it.
Universal.
We've made a modification to not allow that here in the city. So I'm willing, you know, to go that way. I don't need, and to me, it makes no sense anyway. If somebody does get appointed as a city commissioner, and then has to, you know, run for reelection in November, and they're here for six months, that gives them no advantage.
Well, okay, well, I'm glad you made that very clear to me. But the reason I was staying on is, if you do appoint somebody, even now or in May, they get the rest of my term.
Yeah, or is it... Yeah, I'm not, I'm not planning, like I said, I... Yeah, I'm not, I'm not planning, like I said, I, I would just leave it vacant.
It wouldn't be for six months, is all I'm saying.
Correct.
It would be for the rest of my term, correct?
Correct. And I'm, I'm.
Yeah, well, hold on a second, let's get an answer to that question.
If you, if you want that additional option, then that could be in here. I mean, there are cities that do say they appoint only until the election.
This thing, though, says till the end of term.
Yes, that's how it's written now, yes.
Okay.
I, I would just go with this. We don't need to complicate it anymore. There's no real, there's no real advantage for, for somebody, you know, to be there just for, from now till November, and it'll cause probably more pain between people being split on how that works out there because you can't reach consensus on it. So I've come to the conclusion that that's probably the, the best option. And I, and I said that to a couple people in emails. So, you know, that rumor's out there already.
So just to be clear, what I hear you saying is that you would be comfortable having an election for four people?
Yes.
In November?
Yes.
In November.
That's going to be an interesting election, but we can do it.
It will be interesting. Yeah. And my objective was to make sure that the community selects the people, and that has been my, my goal this entire time. So I'm glad we have that on record. This makes my decision process a little bit easier, and I can support this, this ordinance.
Anybody else? It was my idea to push it to the fallen, I mean, I meant, vote for four people.